Good evening. This is our city commission study session tonight. Please make sure your cellphones are turned off. I'll be setting in for the mayor this evening. The first item on our agenda is to review parking-related issues for the city-owned property at Third and Kiowa.
Julie, would you keep this off?
All right, thanks. As we said, we're going to talk about some parking issues here at North Third and Kiowa. The property at the southwest corner, this outlined in yellow up there on the screen, is owned by the City of Leavenworth, and there is an existing parking lot on it. The city's been approached by the Shelter of Hope group about donating or selling that property to their group for construction of homeless shelter, which the commission has already given consensus to, and will be presenting a real estate contract at an upcoming regular meeting for that. So we're just talking about the parking tonight. Right now, the parking lot that is in existence on the city-owned lot and the parking lot immediately to the south of it are utilized by Riverside Resources, which is just on the east side of Third Street, and they've been using those parking areas for several decades as their main parking. There's currently a special use permit in place for the parking area, and when we were reviewing the special use permit that was issued in 1985, we discovered that it was actually issued incorrectly. As you know, in the north part of town, most of the blocks have those skinny 25-foot lots underlying the existing parcels, which is the case for the city-owned lot. So it would be like lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of block such-and-such. And the special use permit was issued for the incorrect two lots of the city-owned portion, so the special use permit does not quite cover the entire parking area. It covers part of the parking area and part of the open grassy area, and the portion of the parking lot south of the alley, it was issued correctly for. So as you can see, it's kind of offset. Our current regulations do not require a special use permit for off-site parking, so it's really not needed regardless. The southern portion is owned by Riverside Resources. The special use permit just isn't needed, and so we plan to present an ordinance to rescind that, just to sort of clean it up. Since it's not needed, it won't change any of the parking situation, and we'll be bringing that, I believe, to the next regular city commission meeting as well. So that just goes over the special use issue. To go on, the Shelter of Hope group has presented a conceptual floor plan to staff that shows a 6,000-square-foot building. They do have the lot directly to the west under contract that they would be purchasing to use as well for construction of the shelter, since there would not be enough room just on the city-owned lot. So the existing regulations would require about 15 spaces for the size of the building that they've proposed, 15 parking spaces plus an additional one space per employee/volunteer that they have working at a time, and staff estimates that it would be no more than 20 total spaces required for the homeless shelter. Right now, in this parking area that's on the city-owned lot, there are 11 marked spaces. People do park along the street side of it. There are no marked spaces there, but people will squeeze in three or four cars depending on what's there.
And that's legal? That's not a no-parking area?
It's not a no-parking area, and we don't enforce any type of parking enforcement there, so... So the shelter would have to provide all required parking spaces for their use, whatever might be existing, or if they would need to add some more, that might need to be provided on the portion that they develop. And like I said before, Riverside Resources does use both of these parking areas as their parking for their use. In talking to them, they've indicated that they currently have about 60 clients in their daytime program, along with 25 to 30 daytime staff, so they do use that parking area pretty heavily. It's their main source. They do have some drop-off that occurs with clients being brought to their facility, but in the days that I've gone by this, it's pretty full-up. They do have a paved area behind their building, and they've indicated to me that that's really more used for staging of their vans and buses that they would use for disabled clients and not so much as a parking area. In the southern portion of the parking lot that's owned by Riverside Resources, there's another 11 spaces, so they've got a total of 22 marked spaces between the city-owned portion and their portion that they own right now. Based off of the current regulations, they would need about 58 total spaces based on their building size and their staff that they have working. Since their use has been in existence, they're considered legal nonconforming in regards to parking, so regardless of what happens with the parking situation, they would not be required to add any more because they are in existence, so they're legal nonconforming. But taking some of this parking away for another use would greatly impact their clients and their staff. So since we've got two uses wanting to use these existing parking areas right now, really not a great solution, staff's come up with two alternatives. The first would be to go ahead with the transfer of the entire city-owned lot to the Shelter of Hope for utilization in construction of the homeless shelter, and they've indicated that they would intend to keep that existing parking area and use that as their required parking. They would be required to meet the parking requirements, which, as I stated, would be about 20, we estimate, and so they would need to either provide additional parking spaces on what they build or request a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The second option that we've come up with would be to split the city-owned lot and retain the eastern portion of it with the parking area to be used by Riverside Resources for them to continue using as their parking area, and transfer the western half to the Shelter of Hope. In that case, they would need to provide all of the required spaces on what they build or again, request a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So those are the two basic options we've come up with, and really, tonight, staff is looking for direction in handling the parking issue between the two uses. I know that there are representatives from both groups here. I can try and answer any questions you might have. I know it's a little bit of a tricky situation.
The area south of the yellow box there, that parking area right there, that is owned by Riverside Resources.
That's correct.
The area in the yellow box is owned by the city.
Correct.
The parking lot is a public parking lot. It's, I know, it's heavily utilized by Riverside Resources, but in theory, anyone can park there.
Correct.
So the one at Riverside Resources, does it say parking for Riverside Resources clients or patrons only?
I don't believe there's any signage up. I don't recall seeing any, but they could let us know for sure if there is.
But they've, but obviously, they've used the yellow box for probably the last 30 years or however long.
That's correct.
And I think most people probably assume it's that, but obviously, we know that it's not necessarily that. Let's say that we give that whole yellow box, as you're saying, right there, option one, to Shelter of Hope. What's Riverside Resources? What's their option then? What happens to them? Because on a given day, I look at that south parking lot right now, it looks like it's filled. That north one, can I count? Four vehicles and two on the street, and maybe there's a fifth one. I don't know if one's parked facing north or facing south there. How many spaces are in there right now?
There's 11 in that north.
11 marked diagonally, and how many in the southern one?
11 also, so there's 22 total.
So they have, if I'm counting right, four, eight parked diagonally, then four parked, not on the street but on the curb, facing north and south. So they've actually got 12 in there now, and that doesn't cause a problem with parking 12 in there.
I don't believe it has caused a problem.
It hasn't been, obviously. Then I see three more out on the street, there's 15. Now, I don't know when this photo was taken. On the north one, I've got two on the street, one facing north or south, and 1, 2, 3, 4, I think that's four. The bottom one, I can't tell if it's a vehicle or not, but four. But there's, that means there's seven open spaces, diagonal spaces, and on the southern one, there's three open diagonal spaces, according to your count. So I guess I'd like to hear both sides from both entities that are here. If we go with option one and give the yellow box, for lack of a better term, to Shelter of Hope, what's Riverside Resources's issues? If we parcel it out, and then what is it, free-for-all there in the morning to see who can get there first? I don't know. So I...
Well, if we, my other question too, if we transfer the lot to the shelter, then that's not a city lot anymore. Doesn't that become their private property?
That'll become their private property, and I understand that Sister Vicky with the Shelter of Hope has made contact with Riverside Resources, indicated that they would be open to sharing that. But you're correct, it would then be owned by the Shelter of Hope.
Yes, okay.
And then, by definition, they could enforce it how they please.
Correct.
So, yeah, they, you know, we're leaving it for them to work it out themselves, yeah. Other concern is, too, you'd mentioned the variances would have to go through zoning appeals. My concern is, too, if ever the properties sell and they don't become what they are today, then we're projecting into the future that variance, and that usually comes back to haunt, you know, future, you know, people sitting in these chairs. So I, you know, I think I'd like a better solution than, you know, going with the variance, too. You know, parking is expensive to build, too. But, yeah, I think we need to, I guess, hear from both parties first.
Is all the green space there in the northern half, all that green space, even part of that yellow, is where the Shelter of Hope is going to build their...
Correct, and they've got the lot next to it open, so...
How many square feet is that lot right there outside the yellow box? Approximately?
I don't know. I've got GIS open, let's see.
12,000 square feet.
Oh, well.
12,000 square feet, okay. And they're going to put a footprint of a 6,000-square-foot building.
Correct.
And that doesn't mean they have 6,000 feet of parking afterwards, I know that. Okay, I'm just wondering how big that is. And the other lot is, that other section is 12,000 square feet?
Yeah, it looks like about the same.
Plus or minus a few, okay.
Is there plans when they build the shelter, because that will leave some of the remaining lot, is there plans to develop that as parking at all around the building, or...
We haven't seen a site plan, we've just seen the floor plan, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Can we hear from both?
Yes, let's do that. I'm fine with that. They come up.
Again, what I'd say from the shelter standpoint is, we have very little, very few people who drive, and we're very willing to use street parking, too. And anytime Riverside needs it, they say that they often have, or at least sometimes have, trainings there where they really need every single space. All we need to know is they have it that day, we'd tell our people not to park in the lot that day. You know, what they do is very good work that we want to see continue, and so we don't want to hinder that in any way. And, you know, I think, given the few people that we have actually parking, except for our van, you know, I don't know that there's much that we would really use from the lot.
I'm Katie Walker with Riverside Resources. Option two that was presented was something that we had actually discussed, both with Ms. Hurley and as well with Sister Vicky when she came to visit us. And that's something that, for us, would be agreeable. You know, we currently mow the green half of that, but we don't utilize it for any reason. And so splitting the parcel to allow us to continue using the parking area would be great. I know there were some things brought up as far as the street parking and the number of spaces that are utilized in this particular picture. The street parking, since this is currently still an emergency snow route, anytime that it snows, the plow trucks have to come through. We have to, and we actually utilize our backspace there as well during that period of time, because most of the time, we end up with the buses all the way back to prevent having to force other people to park on the street. As far as the parking lot in the rear of our building, that garage that you can see is used for product that we use in our sheltered workshop, and so we need to transport that back and forth. We have pallet jacks and things like that, and it's also a break area for the people that we serve, because it has that fence around it so people don't wander into the street or disappear, things like that. Really, our standpoint on it is that, you know, we've maintained this lot for 30 years. We trim the trees, we mow the grass, repave the parking lot, we remove the snow on the sidewalk portion as well as the, you know, the actual lot. There's limited expansion area around us, and it would be very costly, you know, acquiring that property, paving it, grading it, things like that, and we do utilize this on a daily basis. You know, the number of cars, we perform several different types of services. So we have a targeted case manager who takes people on doctor's appointments, whose car may or may not be here, but she is there at different times. We do a eligibility determination through our CDDO, and so we have family members or other persons served that come in for regular meetings to determine whether they're eligible. There's visits from MCO representatives, state agencies. This right here is probably an adequate picture of just what it would look like on a random time of a random day. We do in-service trainings, which I think, when Ms. Hurley came up to have that meeting, that was actually one of those days, and all the on-street parking, plus both parking lots were completely full. And, you know, as stated in the policy report, we would require the 58 spaces if we built this building all over again today, and we're not asking for that. We're not asking for any additional parking. We just ask to be allowed to keep the parking that we have for the people that we serve. You know, we really do support Sister Vicky and the Shelter of Hope. We believe it's a great cause and definitely something that our community needs, but we also believe that we provide a very valuable service to the community. And so I just feel like it would be a position of trading one service provider for another, and no population is more important than the other.
So which option are you...
I like option two. You know, I feel like, as far as keeping that parking lot that we've utilized the whole time, we'd be glad to turn over the grass, moving to somebody else, or the tree trimming. There's one particularly tall, almost dead one over there.
What about... It's up to the mayor here, but what is the Riverside Resource, Shelter of Hope, which option do they want? And you have to come up with a...
Obviously, maybe one.
So here we are again, having Clay Solomon. And I don't think Shelter of Hope is ready to break ground and start building in the next couple of weeks. Getting close, okay, but it'll be a while. I'm wondering if we can throw it back to that group, because I think they're both outstanding organizations, and they're both outstanding people and outstanding groups that can work together. Can they come up with an MOU to bring to us? Because, you know, otherwise, we're going to have to cut this baby in half, and no one's going to be happy to say, which side, which one do you want?
Really, because technically, they're going to be forced to do that anyway, because once...
But if we have an MOU in writing, as the years go along, a new board of directors comes in from either side, you know, someone may want to play hardball with the other group for some reason, who knows what happens, and, you know, in many organizations evolve. So an MOU would be one that kind of says, you know, here's the understanding, and right now, we've got a win-lose situation on both of these, you know. But are we going to make happy Shelter of Hope and Riverside Resources? But can you, can these two groups get together, hash something out, and bring it to us that we can possibly do? And I don't, and I would hope they could do that within a couple of weeks, and we can do it, because I don't feel like playing Solomon with either of you.
If it were not the Shelter of Hope, and if it were any other entity that wanted to buy the lot, this would have come to light anyway that it is a city-owned parking lot, and I'm sorry that they've been saddled with maintaining it on that, you know, and that's...
Well, they haven't been saddled with it, they volunteered to do it. I'm glad that they have.
Yeah, you know, yeah, with the special use permit, but thinking it was theirs, you know. But it's got to be an agreement between the two parties, because once we transfer the property and we've already committed to doing that, at least, you know, in theory, we're not in control of that property anymore. You know, so you guys have to work out some type of amiable solution, and it's unfortunately to Riverside Resources' best advantage to do that. You know, I hate playing Solomon either, but that's kind of in the direction that this is heading.
That's our only option here.
Yeah.
Right, now it is, and it sounds...
Cut it in half.
And it sounds like, actually, both parties are close to a compromise as it is. I just think it needs to be worked out a little bit further, and I think a compromise could probably be reached.
Well, I don't think they're close to a compromise. One wants number one, one wants number two. So I don't, but I'm wondering if they can get together and come up with something that they both can, or if they present it to us, rather than us say, here are your two options, we're going to flip a coin. Or obviously, we wouldn't flip a coin, but it's about what our options are right now.
Well, what we're going to really come into play on this is to offer that, to give that variance that you don't need to bring it up to the standards of where the square footage of the buildings you're both developing. And as much as I really know that that's going to be probably a problem, and it's the future commission here, you know, really, today, we're dealing with the current problem and the solution for that, so, you know, it's...
Madam Mayor, you think we can throw it back to them? Or how about Mr. City Manager, what are your thoughts?
Yes, see what Paul thinks.
Yeah, I can't speak for them. I know they've talked about this issue, and they'd seen the two options we had. You know, at the staff level, we don't have any more options. We'd certainly be willing to help any discussions or talks, but we're kind of stuck by the regulations, and technically, it's a pretty simple issue, it's just a matter of...
Would both these groups, I hate to address you out there, can you two get together and hash out something? Both of you give and take a little bit and bring us something? Because otherwise, I see advantages to both, I see disadvantages to both. But if I pick either one, somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose. Please come up to the mic.
My name's Linda Martin. I have a question, please. The special use permit that Julie talked about that's incorrect, is that on the north half of the parking lot?
It's on both. Let me bring this back. It's on both. It was issued for, it was supposed to be issued for the north half of the parking lot and the south half of the parking lot, so it is on both sides of the...
So there is a special use permit there for the city-owned lot?
Correct.
If it remained a city-owned parking lot and only a portion of the city lot, not including the parking lot, was transferred to Shelter of Hope, could that parking lot be counted as partial parking for both entities?
The, our regulations allow a use to count up to 50% of their required parking as off-site parking. So if the shelter, if we split the city-owned lot and retained the portion of the parking lot as city-owned, that would then be off-site for the shelter. And if the shelter is required 20 spaces, which we think is by what they would be required, they could count up to 10 of those required spaces as their off-site parking. And I would assume still would want some sort of MOU in place since Riverside Resources uses it also. And then the shelter would just be required to build 10 spaces on their portion that they have ownership of, or again, if they were wanting to build less than that, they would have to seek a variance through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So basically, if we kept part of that city lot as a city lot, anybody could, would have to fight over it anyway?
They were there first in the morning, get to it.
Question, what's the city requirements on...
Can't hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Haddock, 17213 Jameson Road, Leavenworth. What's the city requirements on a parking space? What's the square footage? One parking place is how many square feet?
I want to say there are eight by 18, eight by 6...
I'm thinking eight by 16.
Eight by 16, yeah, I don't have the specifics in front of me.
128 square feet.
Yeah.
John Haddock, H-A-T-T, okay.
Yes, sir.
I, once again, I, obviously, there's some variances both sides are bringing up, and as I understand, our position here is, we can't grant a variance. People can bring a variance to us, then we can grant it, but we can't make up a variance here. We can't come up with an equitable solution. That's why I'm hoping that they can come together, and it may not fit one or two, but then they ask for a variance, and then we can approve the variance.
Go to the Board of Zoning.
No, the Board of Zoning.
Well, yeah, I mean, it goes through the process, but we can't do that.
It would never come through, easy and district.
Yeah, it doesn't come here at all.
So, I don't know.
So we're asking them to do that and then go through the process with the Board of Zoning?
Yeah, my thought is, hopefully, the two groups can get together, they can sit down, and obviously, I think Ms. Hurley's staff and the city staff would help them on any legalities or, you know, what the requirements are, and I think that possibly they could come up with a solution.
Are you willing to do that?
Yes, we'll be...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I guess...
Yeah, I think we have a consensus to let them handle it then. And if, yeah, I'll come back in a...
I guess we'd like to hear from them, and when they've come up with anything...
They'd come back here, and then go to zoning first?
No, they would come back here.
Okay, okay, all right.
Would they need their site plan? Would they need their site plan?
It depends on what the solution is. If the solution requires them to have 10 more, then yeah, they'd have their site plan. But we'll work with them.
It would be nice for us to be able to see the building layout and see how it would fit on this lot as well. I think that would help personally.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, number two on our agenda is review sign recognition policy.
This is just really just a house cleaning issue. Carly can handle this. It came up because we noticed that the sign recognition policy, we've had a couple lately, that it offers two sites, one, the Welcome Center site, which we don't actually own anymore. There are a couple of signs still remaining that I don't think are on our property, but they're still there. So this was sort of an entree to talk about other issues related to signs, if you'd like to. Or we can just clean up the north location, whatever the commission does.
I would like to. You know, when we drive through over there by the VA Park, the signs to me look scattered. I would like to see a, one sign, one large sign with all of these signs on it. I think it would look a lot neater, people would stop, and to me, that looks, that just looks scattered.
It's a hodgepodge of signs now, yeah.
They're different sizes, they're different colors, and I would like to see one large sign with all of these on, with all of these placed on it, and be able to have space to put others if we need to.
And are you talking about, so there'd be like a uniform, so you wouldn't have a banjo in the...
The banjo could be on it, but just be on a large, one large, one large board.
Background.
Background, yeah, with the signs on it. I've seen that in other communities, and I think it just looks neater than having just signs down the street like that. To me, that's just my thought on it.
I'd love to see that in our sign code.
And we would have to have, if we put a large sign, we'd have to have a conversation with KDOT about visibility and signs, because it's on the state highway and in the right of way.
Well, I just think it looks, I mean, you're going down the street, and that is a pretty fast street anyway. They're on 4th Street, and you can't really see them anyway, but...
But if, yeah, if we get one more there, too, and, you know, it's, it is beginning to, it is, it's...
It looks junky to me, I'm sorry, but I just don't think it looks very good for an entrance door, so...
Well, yeah, especially when you see the view of the street, you know.
Yeah.
It's, you know, and then the roadwork sign there and the poles, it is beginning to look like.
I wonder, that a citizen asked me, you know, going to some cities and says, well, from Leavenworth, whatever, and says, Lions Club meets Rotary, et cetera. I wonder if we could challenge our service clubs in town to work together and, as a project, to kind of do the signs. Because if we, the city do it, I mean, it may, I'm not saying it would look like, you know, just a regular street sign, green and white and says that, but, you know, somebody could put some artistic bent to it, and possibly even take it on as a project. And that's a discussion to have with the service organizations, but just a thought. Yeah, there's a lot of signs, we, of course, with the Medal of Honor recipient signs.
Those aren't even all of them yet.
No, I know that, and, and there's one Olympian missing, and I know Amy Hastings, who did very, very well Sunday, but Melvin Lester from Leavenworth High was in the nineteen ninety-six Olympics, triple jumper, and, you know, he's out there. And I don't know if we put it up, or the family requested it, or, and I know there's different criteria to put them up, but you see the Medal of Honor recipient signs there too. Yeah, it probably does need some, I don't know what the answers are.
Needs a design concept.
It would be a big board.
I know.
If you kept all just the signs on how they were.
Yeah.
I feel like they would have to be.
But you don't have to put them all on one side, do you? I mean, you could put them on both sides.
The other side belongs to Saint Mary's, doesn't it?
Of the sign, of this big sign?
Oh, 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 I thought you said the other side.
Both sides of the sign.
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't have to be that big of a sign, and you could have your service clubs on one side, too, and then have. But I just, I just think it would be a, a place where people would stop, if there's a place to pull in there somewhere, people would stop and have pictures taken and stuff like that. It would be a, I'd like to hear what our CDB person.
I think this is gonna be some design trial and error. I, really, guys, this is gonna be some design trial and error, and I think it's gonna cause some hard feelings, because we're not gonna probably be able to use every single one of these, because you're talking about a billboard out there. We do everybody using the existing signs here on this, so.
Or even making it printable, so where you're doing forty-five, and can read what's going on there. It's gotta be big enough to be able to see that.
I, I'd say we, yeah, I don't, I don't know who or where, but we, you know, come up with some different design concepts and different ideas. You know, we're gonna have to leave room in there too, if somebody wants to be added or something like that, you know, and come up with, you know, because we have so many now, and, you know, and.
We've had a couple inquiries, Carla.
We've had about more signs, yeah. And I haven't turned them back in, but yes, I do have a couple others that have requested signs, I just wanted to.
And we honestly haven't turned down too many yet.
I wonder if another idea might be having like one sign with two or three people on it, and then further down the road, another one with two or three, and further that way. Because we got more than three now, I'm just saying just this rough number. That way, they're not so big, and they're not so many, but there's, we have more than one, that way they're spaced out down the road. It won't look so cluttered. I mean, it's just an idea, you know, to oppose having one giant one, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I've seen them like where they're sometimes long and narrow, or very tall, and people have all their service organizations in a, in like a small town, I mean.
Yeah, I've seen some come out like a pyramid.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different concepts, but, but I think that that's about where we're getting to.
Yeah, I agree.
Someplace in there, you know, on this, to just, you know.
And honestly, it's nice to have a town with this kind of a problem, we have so many people that need this recognition. Get honored, that's great.
True, true, but yeah, but.
Okay, we can, we can come up with a couple ideas and bring them back to you, consolidate them a little bit. Any other, Carla, do you have anything else you want to do?
No, other than, you know, in looking at this a little bit closer, you know, I first thought that the Welcome Center was the, you know, at least the one thing we needed to clean up. But then as I read the second one, Ray Miller Park, actually where we've got the signs. Now, this says it's between K five and the entrance to the VA, and actually, all of these are on the opposite side, so.
They're, they're north of the VA entrance.
They're north of, yes, yeah.
Yeah, they're kind of spread out all along.
And where's the Murray Dixon one?
The Murray Dixon one is within that area of between K five and VA, so.
They're somewhere.
They're sprinkled all over.
It's not where that box truck is.
Okay, okay.
Well, your main question here, you're asking is location for two areas, you still want two areas?
No, the easy part of this solution was we have to get rid of the north, the Welcome Center, because there is no Welcome Center. I mean, I wish it were, I wish this issue were.
And the signs that we have up there, like, my Paul said, those are, that's actually on school property, that's not city property.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, they are, okay, but, yeah. But, but you do need to remove the Welcome Center.
Yeah, they need to be gone and just have them all in one place, at the VA Park.
And I know Wayne and Amy are Leavenworth High.
I'm sorry?
I know Wayne and Simeon and Amy are school, they're Leavenworth High schools. I don't know if Dr. Levitt is at Leavenworth High School.
Yeah, yes, he is, so.
Well, that's another thought, too, is that.
What, so you're recommending that we get rid of the ones on Fourth Street, that entrance into Leavenworth, and only, you'd only see it if you came in from the south?
Right.
Don't we have, are we, don't we have space up on the north part? Is that, is that a problem?
All we really have is Arbor Way, along Fourth Street, a little bit there, and that's a little bit back off, because you have the state right of way, and then the Arbor Way, and then private property. But once we sold that corner, we don't have any city land right there.
But, so we're on the school property, but, I mean, the school's not, they don't mind. I mean, they, they'll play ball, I mean, they're, they're proud of that too, because all, they're all. I, I would, because I think a lot of people enter the town from the Missouri side, come through, and they wouldn't, they'd never see those then, we don't have people from, coming south. I like keeping them in both places. I wouldn't add one on Metropolitan at Twentieth, or on Spruce at Twentieth, or anyplace else, any of the other entries into town. These two, I think, should be maintained and maybe somehow cleaned up if that's, I hate to use the word cleaned up, because they're not a mess, it's just, you know, I mean, make it.
Organized.
Like you're recommending, yeah, organized, that's the term.
Okay, let me come up with something.
Okay. I guess that's all we have on our agenda. Anybody have any comments or any issues tonight that you need to bring to the study session, or are we allowed to do that?
You can do whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
You on the meeting, you don't even have to adjourn us, you can keep us all.
Although you would get an objection.
I didn't want to keep you very long.
And two of us could walk out, and you couldn't adjourn it. And you'd be here till midnight.
That's right, that's right.
I, I forgot to mention last week, I know Commissioner Weekly and I attended with a couple of state representatives, Representative Bradford and Senator Fitzgerald, the Saint Vincent's Clinic was at the open house last week, and City Manager Miller was there too, and a nice tour of the facility and a.
And the Assistant City Manager, the City Manager Miller?
I'm sorry, City Manager Kramer, I, I'm sorry. That'll take a while, I'll look down on it. But, yeah, very informative, and they, they do a great service to this community, and work very hard on very limited resources, very interesting. Thank you.
I went to a, a regional meeting the other day, and Justin Stewart went as well, from the city, in regard to transportation in our, in the Midwest. It was called a Midwest Conference, or Unconference, they had a lot of people that got together. One thing that's, that struck me was that, you know, you, we had a wide diversity of people there. There were those who are having trouble accessing transportation. There are, was a healthcare contingency for people who have trouble accessing healthcare. And then there just was the general population, and it's not just about, it's not just about that, but in our community, people come here, we've got these hotels, we have people either renting a car, they're staying here for a month, they don't really have any transportation, we don't have any local transportation, we don't have any regional transportation between us in Missouri, or us in the Legends, or even Atchison, so. And we did at one time. And I don't know, you know, it's a difficult thing. Sister Vicky, when she had her regional workshop here to, to talk about the needs in our community, transportation was seen as the biggest need, I mean, for people to get jobs in Kansas City, to be able to get there, or in, you know, go to school in Atchison. My brother taught autobody up there, and there were people that didn't have cars, that couldn't get up to, get up to work, or to school. And so there's a lot of different things, but anyway, I want to keep on top of this, and I want to study it some more. And Kansas City is, is looking at some Uber, you know, Uber Zip Cars, that sort of thing too, which is real popular in California. My son used Zip Car, and it was fantastic. But anyway, this Thursday, according to the schedule I have here, there is a regional transit public meeting, and it is from four thirty to six o'clock at the Riverfront Community Center. So I just want to throw that out to the public and encourage people to attend that. We need to have, I know at the meeting the other day, there were a lot of industry people and, and that sort of thing. We need the people who make the decisions and to, that are able to come together. I mean, it's gonna be a regional thing, if we've got to do something regionally. And the KC Metro has moved to the Legends, where they're able to connect to the Legends, and it would be nice to see if we could continue that connection and be able to connect our people here, so we're not out in the middle of nowhere. And one other thing, I, one thing that is really depressing when I look in the, when I look in the paper and see the delinquent taxes. I wish that if everybody would pay their taxes, we wouldn't have an issue about the budget, and we wouldn't have to raise the mail levy. Don't you guys agree with that?
Yes.
Or can you disagree?
I agree too. Anyway, I'm just gonna throw that out there, I hate to see, it's a large amount of money that is on delinquent taxes.
And I'm sure.
Everybody, please pay your taxes, and I know it's hard to do, I have a hard time paying my taxes, but I do it. So please pay your taxes. Any other comments?
I do, I've, I've got one item. I got a, an email, a couple concerned citizens, just make people aware, schools back in session, you know, and, and we need to watch out for kids, but specifically, the water department is doing some roadwork around Anthony and Thornton, and the trucks are parking on the sidewalks, so the kids are walking in the street to go around the, the cars. And I, and I emailed to Paul, if, if our chief and that could kind of work with the water department, but keep on top of that, that there's some way that they can work around that schedule, so that's not happening, so kids are not walking in the street, because that's a very busy intersection on that. So we got, you know, hopefully they'll get that roadwork done pretty quick, but it is a major project that's gonna go on for a little while. So just kind of make everybody aware to slow down and see what we can do to work with the water department to make that area a little safer.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
Nope.
All right, then do we need a motion, or?
Yes, sir.
Take a motion.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, start with.
Hi. Hi.